We'll call to meet to order at 6:31. And the first order item is to approve the minutes from the regular meeting held on June 11th, 2019.
Make a motion to approve the minutes from that June 11th meeting. I'll second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Next, we have an appointment to the Economic Development Commission. Christina Nucci sent me an email a couple of weeks ago. She has grew up in Deep River, moved away for a couple of years and has moved back into town about a year and a half, two years ago. Or maybe a year ago. But she expressed an interest in getting involved. Thought economic development might be what she wanted to do. She attended a meeting last, I guess it was last week. Couple of weeks ago. Enjoyed the meeting and just said later asking to be appointed. I think she'd be a good addition.
There's a couple of vacancies still on that.
I think there is one more. I think she'd be a good addition. I'm gonna ask, I'm gonna recommend that we appoint her for a term to expire on 12/1/2021.
I'll make a motion to appoint Christine Nucci to the Economic Development Commission. Term to expire is 12/1/2021.
I'll second that. All those in favor?
Aye.
Next on the agenda is discussion of the exemption of horses from property taxation. After our last meeting, I promised I was gonna continue to do more research. Try to find out about other towns, what other folks are doing. As part of that research, I was able to reach out to assessors, 169 different assessors from across the state. This is actually a report from all of, all the Assessors Association that happens to have a count of all of the towns in Connecticut that exempt taxation on horses. Of 169 towns, nine, I'm sorry, 30 exempt horses. So there are 139 towns that tax horses. Just like we do right now. One of those towns that does exempt horses is Killingworth.
Exempts them.
Exempts them. They have the high threshold of 20 horses over the price, over the value of $20,000. Are still taxed for taking exempt horses that are less than $20,000. Just based on that and given what I think are, the tone of what I am receiving from this review. I would be very comfortable with offering the compromise, and I think it is a good compromise because everyone, not everyone's gonna be 100%. But modeling an exemption in Deep River after that, that's in Killingworth, which is horses under $20,000 are not taxed. Over $20,000 they are. And the value is based on the fact that the assessor is the owners, I'm sorry, the owners are required to provide documentation establishing fair market value of a horse, including but not limited to purchase price, insurance documents, and evidence of any income associated with breeding and things like that. So, I mean, that's kind of where I'm at. I don't know, I'm happy to listen to what you guys have to say or what anyone in the audience has to say.
I, contrary to, you know, when the, in the public, and when the large group was here before, there was a sentiment that, you know, most towns exempt horses. And I didn't think that that was the case, and now it's documented that that is not the case. So I, I think a good compromise would be to, and it wouldn't necessarily affect a lot of the the smaller people that have one or two, when you say pet horses, or, and they might be registered at a farm, but they're not, they're not doing it as a as a big operation or whatever. So I think it's a good, I believe it's a good compromise. From zero to, from taxing every horse to taxing no horses, I think it's a good, good middle ground.
My only question is, I know it's a lot of extra work, but of those 139 that do tax, what's their threshold? Do we know?
The only one that I know of that has a threshold is Killingworth.
So the other ones tax any, a horse if it's, no matter what, they're taxing?
All, the state of Connecticut allows for any horse under $1,000 to be exempt. And I did not speak with all these 169 towns. I spoke with about, I think I spoke with 30.
That's fine. I was just curious if someone else maybe had a $5,000, someone else had a $10,000, I was just curious, but that's fine.
That's, that's all that I know.
Yeah, I think $20,000 is a very fair compromise for them and us.
Jane?
Well, actually, Jim, Jim pretty much answered that. I was gonna say, it's not fair if you don't look for some of the backyard courses, which is the kind of thing that I have. But he doesn't, I think most of the backyard courses probably don't come anywhere close to 20,000.
That's my guess, but I haven't, I've never owned a horse.
Yeah, because otherwise it's not fair if you tax just the people that are in the big, the big stables. Because there are a lot of horses in Deep River.
Right.
Awful lot.
Yeah, I think, I think this answers the question that that was, not even a question, but it answers my concern that, that folks were yelling that we're the only town that taxes horses. And that's far from the case. I think we're actually in the vast majority. And we will join that majority with a little bit of an exemption that allows for us to continue to collect on the larger classes.
How does, I know that Robin was not really, it is just a lot of work for not a lot in taxes unless you, I mean, if you're in Kentucky or something and you have breeding and racehorses and stuff.
Well, that's why we engaged in the conversation actually a little bit before, because she and I have been talking about this for about a year. Because I was reading about, I think, North Stonington or Stonington about a year ago adopted this. And we talked about the value of how much work it costs, how much work it took to get not that much. But I think this actually strengthens our concern that we're not gonna be doing a lot of work for horses that are worth $1,000, $2,000, or up to, up to $20,000. But this, if we model it, and the plan is, this will be very clear. We'll be basing this on bill of sale, what the horse is insured for, and other assorted documentation. So it's not gonna be that she doesn't have to go out and study horses. The documentation is gonna provide what the horse is valued for.
What happens if you have a tax on there? Because in the blink of an eye, a horse can lose.
I think there's probably some documentation that can show that.
I was gonna say, I would think there would be an adjustment in insurance or evaluation of that horse.
Or a letter from the vet.
Something to that effect that says my $100,000 horse is now not worth much.
Yeah, that would have to be.
Exactly, and I would think that there would be an appropriate amount of documentation from the appropriate people.
So then, from that point, I mean, if you pro-rating or whatever the heck it is?
Whatever the state allows for us to do. I don't, I don't know the.
Because if you have a horse for the whole year at that value.
I think, I, would be foolish for me to try to comment on how it would be, whatever's fair and whatever the state will allow for is the way that we would go.
Yeah, what do you do with cars or something? I mean, if all of a sudden your car is?
There's blue books.
People bring, people bring documentation that the plates have been surrendered, isn't going to longer own the car.
If you don't, if you no longer own it.
But I'm not sure it happens if it's pro-rated by the day. I'm not sure if they don't break the.
Yeah, I don't know. My guess is it's. By the year, but I don't know.
And it's a little different with cars, because antique cars are taxed at a maximum of $500 over 25 years. But a newer car, if it's total land or whatever, then I gotta believe that there's some sort of a formula for the valuation of that car and the taxes that go according with that.
It's interesting, by the way, that you bring up cars because I was talking to somebody at the Connecticut Horse Council and she said that that's where it comes from, was that horses were transportation. And so the horse that owned the farm was a farmed animal, he wasn't taxed, but the horse that folded a carriage or whatever.
Well, that's, I think, in the, the reading that I've been doing, that's, that is still the case. The state still considers these horses. They need, in order to be exempt, they need to be a farm and worked as a, as a part of the farm, not a, not a pet or something like that. I don't know if I'm saying that correctly, but horses that are used as part of a farm are exempt by the state. So, you know, that being said, I think what I'm gonna do, if you guys agree, is I'm gonna revise this to Deep River's as opposed to Killingworth. We'll model it after this. I'll have that written up and present it at the next meeting and we'll go from that.
Okay.
Yep.
Oh, Jonathan.
Oh, sorry.
So a horse is $30,000. I don't know what our current bill rate is. Say it was 30. That would be a $600 tax, or is it 60?
I would, I would guess it'd be something like that.
I don't know if I got the assessment. Was it 70 or 600?
No, it's not 60.
No.
Six hundred bucks.
Probably 60. Think of your car.
Think of the car.
Do you, do you take off the, the $20,000 or you just say it's, this is 30,000?
Are you?
You do not take the 20 off. Proposed.
Right, right, right. Okay, anyone? Okay. So there was no motion, no need to have a motion. We'll just move that forward.
Okay.
Next on the agenda is review of the Deep River Energy Upgrade. And this is convoluted and important, and maybe we can figure out how to move it forward. The idea, we spoke about this, we've spoken about this for the last few months. Last time we came here, we voted to lock in at this rate. They are shopping and they are looking for lower rates in the meanwhile. But this, the program itself has been ended. So we've only got a few months to take, take advantage of this. And if we wanna start over again, if we are not able to, or we decide not to, that's okay. Well, there's another program starting. But it's different from this and, and we don't know what the rates are gonna be and we don't know how it's gonna go.
So the program, the program's ending?
This, this program is ending.
But since we're already in communication and all that, we're into it.
We're locked into it, yeah, we're into it. If we decide to go in.
If we decide, right.
I like and want to move forward with it. I think everything I understand about it is we're gonna end up saving upwards of $40,000 a year. Which does not include what we save on repair and things like that, because we're replacing old equipment and older things like that. And it does not include, but it also does not take into effect, into account for rising energy costs. So I think it balances out and there's, we know that every two years, Eversource is gonna come and bounce up the rates. You know, this is the way, the way it works. But they, this doesn't account for that. All that said, the billing is what's got me a little goofed up, because, because we're extending this over 10 years, because the cost of the project is so much. We're extending it into a 10-year financing program. If it was in the four-year program, it would not be a net zero. We would have to, at the end of that four years, we'd have to, we'll be paying. But over 10 years, it's a net zero, but it doesn't come as part of the bill. It's its own bill. So the borrow that we make will be paid back over, over 10 years.
And that was at that 3%?
That's a 3.77%. But that's billed directly to the town, because the town is borrowing the money. For the town hall, and for the town hall and for the library, that's not a big deal, because we're, the town is paying those bills already.
The school.
For the school, it's part of the school's budget. And we'll probably talk about this again at the Board of Finance meeting. And it's one of those things where I look at, you know, how, we've got a great relationship with the elementary school and all of that kinda thing, but how do we figure out that's, their, their energy costs are put into their budget? If we're saving money, are they gonna, does that mean we've got extra money we can spend over here? No, not in my mind, no, it doesn't. But how do we get them to reimburse us with this? And that needs to be worked out. That is the only stumbling block that I see in my interest in moving this forward. The problem that I see is that we're running out of time to get this done. Like, we can get, if we were able to get it started in August, I think that what needed to be done while the kids are not in school could be done. And then they would be coming in on nights and vacations to get other things done.
Yeah.
Is that gonna be fixtures?
Yeah, it'll be fixtures. It'll, it's. Well, a lot of it's light bulbs, a lot of it's, a lot of it's heat. A lot of it is things like, I don't even know the specifics, but upgrade of how things are calibrated in the heating system.
More efficient use of the energy you're using.
Yeah, it's a, it's a very detailed program to get the, the school in particular, because that's the bigger energy drain on the town. But both of these buildings as well.
You're right in talking about the repair. When our streetlights were first installed, they were bulbs, whatever they were. And I watched Timmy, Tommy Levy go around one day, and there were four out. A minimum of 15 minutes per lamp. For him to drive there, put the ladder up, take the bulb out, and then drive down. We haven't had any since then.
Right.
And it's been three years, so. There's a, there's a, it wasn't a lot to save on rent.
It will definitely save us there.
Mike, go ahead.
Go ahead, no.
My only question is, I know Dr. Levy's leaving. Have you had any communication with Kim or anyone up there about what we're trying to do?
About the, about the upgrade?
Yeah.
Yes, you know, part of the building to me, not with those two.
Are they thinking about how the money can come back to us versus them to spend it?
No, this is, I'm just learning this. This was actually a question that I asked yesterday.
Okay.
How does this, because in four years, it just becomes part of the bill. And you never see it, you know, it's just, it's in the bill. In this 10-year program, we're going to be getting built, and this is a new thing, and I need to figure out.
I would, I would hope that, you know, with communication with the Board of Finance and the, and the management of the school, that it could, it might be relatively simple answer, but we don't know that it's a simple answer yet.
I'm confident that it's pretty simple.
Yeah, that's what I'm thinking, but we don't know.
Just, just to make sure that we're on the same, same wavelength.
But I'm also not confident, yet, maybe at the end of this conversation, we will be, to move it to a town meeting if we don't have that answered. I, and the problem with that, the speed bump in this whole thing, is that we lose another two weeks, another three weeks, another four weeks, and next thing you know, we're not into August. And we can do these two buildings, but we can't do the school, which is where we're gonna see all the savings.
Or do the school and then do these.
Well, that's the way I would like to do it, but we'd have to, we'd have to get started before the school season starts.
And especially, the later it goes, the more critical it would be to start there, if we move forward.
That's right. And we're backed into a bit of a time corner on this. And.
I would hope it would be a simple answer, but if it's not a simple answer, maybe the thing to do is, at that point possibly, it's, because time's getting to be a crunch and whatever becomes in the new program, unfortunately, maybe.
Well, let me, let me ask you this. What say we schedule, and this is thinking out loud really, it's not the way to commit to a selectmen's meeting, but what say we schedule, we vote to schedule a town meeting in three weeks? That gives us a week to come up with that answer before we have to advertise, before we have to do anything like that. Once we, if we have that answer and it's positive, then we move forward and advertise. If that answer is either negative or not answerable yet,
Right.
then we delay and we just push it back, push it back another week, or maybe we can schedule a special meeting to do that. But that's, that's kinda what I'm thinking about now. Because I do think it is a program that, that the town will benefit from in the long run.
Oh, energy efficient, I mean, it's, it's a big thing.
Great benefit. I'm just concerned that if all of a sudden we save $5,000, we save $10,000, whatever it may be, and they spend that more money instead of giving it back.
Oh, I know, yeah.
That, that's my concern there.
Yep. And everybody's thinking about it, because it was just in the paper that they just did solar on the Chester Elementary School, so you know, there's a lot of this energy efficient stuff going on, and I think it's the proper way to do it, but we gotta make sure that we can figure out that accounting between that building and this building.
I'm confident that it's pretty simple.
Yeah, I think it probably is, but until you know.
It's too simple for me.
Yeah.
What was the payoff when you started breaking even with the investment? You had mentioned that last year.
Oh, it's 10, it's 10 years. We're gonna start at the, at the first year, we're starting, as soon as we, as soon as everything is built out is when we start to pay the loan back. And that, but the savings, including the loan payment, will be $40,000 and change a year.
The initial investment was not?
The initial, I'm sorry, the initial investment is $280,000.
And the other question is, you're doing new HVAC?
Two, no, I'm two-built, no, not at all. We are working on the heating systems, the, that exist. The elementary school is probably a million-dollar project to do HVAC over there. We're not gonna do that. Here, we just did HVAC. Jonathan can tell us how long, everybody in here probably except for me can tell us. It's only been a little while since we redid the heating ducts and things like that in here. And the library, that, that is not, redoing the HVAC is not part of this program. It is part of it. But it is a project in working on the controls of the heat and the light over there.
More efficient use of what we've got.
Will our current service people be able to serve?
Yeah, oh yeah, absolutely, yeah. In fact, I believe they will be doing a portion of the installation.
And the elementary school, being as old as it is, doesn't lend itself to an overall.
Yeah, the heat system, we're continuing to work on that. This will make, this will go a long way towards that. We're, right now, we're spending about $30,000 a year putting in valves. We have at least for the last two years, putting in valves around this system so that hot water can get around to the right places.
They do the air conditioning with window units.
Well, they've always been pneumatic valves and the, it's just not, it's not the way it is now. It's all digital. So we're changing those out, and that's expensive. This will take over that for us, so we won't have to, this will be, that work will be absorbed into this. But yeah, I hate.
That's additional savings, yeah.
Right, right. That's exactly right.
What should be explained at the town meetings?
Yeah, oh yeah, the town meeting will be, we'll have the people here to explain things that I don't
Be more palatable.
Understand well enough to explain, and things like that will come into the conversation as well. So yeah, that, that'll save us, I don't even know. But I, I gotta believe right now, there's probably 12 more to go, so they're anywhere from eight to $12,000 each.
So does that money come out of the Board of Education budget, or is that?
No, that's, we do all the capital spending on that building. So that comes out of our budget. We budget so much a year, 40, I think $40,000 is what our average has been over the last years, just for capital expenses, roof and things like that over there.
It used to be, years and, years in the past, it was part of the, the maintenance of the building. And it was determined, it was when we were back on, probably on the board, where Dick said that the town would, it's a town building, the town should take care of that, and you can, you can educate, spend your time on education.
Part of that problem too was when they needed money for something else, you can come out of maintenance.
Yeah, control of the caches, the big reason for that.
Is the regional district participating in this?
No, they're, they're actually beginning to study for doing it, but not part of this program. They are, they are working towards something like this, but not, not this. That would have been, we actually spoke about that when this first came up, of incorporating that into this. But because those buildings are owned by the region, and these are owned by the town, it was not a, not an equitable project. So, I, I think, I'd like to get that, we can make a motion to move to, in three weeks, to move to the town, the request to borrow and take, to borrow the money through the Eversource program to, to upgrade the heating and lighting and energy programs at the three buildings. Then we can, I think that works. Because we can, we can answer the questions in a week. And advertise if.
And in that time, we'll have enough information, yea or nay, and if there isn't, not gonna, then you, you don't have the meeting.
Right.
Is the, is the 280 a fixed price also?
282 is the cost, yeah.
282, and it's a fixed cost?
280, yeah, total project cost financed the month is $282,000.
Take them pennies in there.
The total payback, I think, comes to $288,000, so the interest is minimal.
They have warranty, guarantee and all that stuff that they're doing, I guess, I'm sure, whatever.
Yeah.
I would say on the fixtures and things like that.
On the equipment, it all comes with a warranty that this, that probably does not last anywhere near as long as the payment. But that's where we live these days, you know, so. So if we can do that, that'd be good.
You've got the dates and all that if you wanna do it.
I don't know the third, what's the third?
Oh, three weeks from calendar would be good, but it's probably.
Ninth? No. Sixteenth?
Sixteenth, yeah. And let's, when's the next selectmen's meeting, in July?
Ninth.
Is that the sixth?
It'll be the ninth.
The ninth?
The ninth.
Yeah, because the, the second, the second is a Tuesday. The ninth.
So it might, it might coincide with, maybe the, would it be, no, maybe go as late as the second.
That's why I hoped not to late that, to late that one, but that's okay, because that'll be, we will talk to the Board of Finance tonight. Rather than scheduling another meeting in between those two, let's go to the 23rd.
Tuesday, the 23rd?
Tuesday, the 23rd. In between the.
Because that would be our meeting.
Selectmen of the finance.
Right.
Although, you never know if we're gonna get bombarded at the selectmen's meeting.
My suggestion for that would be to have as much supporting information from these people as possible.
Three weeks.
Do we have Board of Finance on the 23rd?
Yeah, we do. August, we don't have Board of Finance.
I gotta just get them mixed up.
Yeah, that's also the caucus is right around that week sometime.
It's three weeks would be that, a week of the.
We have the 22nd for us.
Yeah, right.
Either that week.
If we say the 18th, it's a Thursday night at 6:30. And that gives us, we gotta advertise it here, so that gives us two weeks. Gives us almost two weeks to get the, to get all the answers we need. And also to schedule people to come to the town meeting. So I think that's, I think that's a good day.
July 18th.
July 18th.
All right, I'd like to make a motion to have a town meeting on July 18th at 6:30. The topic will be for the energy upgrade and the financing of $282,000 for the upgrades at Deep River Elementary School, the Deep River Library, and the Deep River Town Hall.
Second.
The only thing I would add to that is let's bring this, we'll bring this to the Board of Finance and they'll, this is contingent upon them moving it forward as well.
Put them on the occasion.
All right, great.
Firehouse and garage?
No, firehouse is gonna be brand new.
At some point.
Hopefully, under construction in a year or so.
Right.
And the garage is a bigger project than this. All right, all those in favor?
Aye.
Audience of citizens?
I, I just wanna thank Angus.
For one record, thank Angus for listening.
I, I just wanna thank Angus, for one record, thank Angus for, uh, listening, setting up and following up and meeting with DOT on the traffic issues. I know I was pleasantly surprised, I thought we were gonna meet with one person, and we ended up meeting with seven engineers up at DOT. And I think they took, they listened and they're taking it serious, and I hope they, Angus was kind of adamant about some things, which was, I think, impressed upon them that we have a situation and that they're gonna hopefully do something, you know, help work with us, which was the game plan all along, so.
Yeah, that's a.
It's a, it's a. It's a topic in town that you're hearing more and more about.
Yeah, they were, they were there.
Topic around the state, but they, I was, I expected to see a few people, I didn't expect to see everybody out there, so that was good.
But even today, on, on Facebook, there was somebody spouting off about the speed on Main Street. And, uh, and, you know, so it's, it's, it's out there, and it's not like you and the, all of us are gonna shove it or anything like that. I think the more people know about it, the pressure can be put on the state and the state police. You know, it's, it's, it's a good thing, we'll figure it out.
Anybody drew it out of Cedar Lake Road lately?
Cedar Lake?
On forty-five north.
Oh, yeah.
Rumble strip down the center.
Hmm?
Good idea, but I think they, they did it Monday, I got a call on Tuesday from, uh, Neil Hamblin.
Yeah.
He said, what's going on? I don't know, I haven't heard anything. It does, as you drift, of course, it makes that noise and it saves your life, it also wakes up the handlers.
Would they rather? I don't know, I, I, I understand that rumble strips and what they can do and what they, what they're supposed to do. Um, but I don't know in our rural area that they're appropriate, whether it's a state highway or not. And I argued against them for quite a long time, but there was no choice. And that's my point with this thing too, we went up and these people listened, they were prepared, they had, they had Deep River on their computer, they had every, they had Mike's letter ready. And they, and they answered every single question that we asked them, and they addressed every statement that we made. But in the end, they were, you know, it's their road.
Hmm?
You know, even the signs that we put up there, I was kinda, I was joking, kind of, but, you know, we're supposed to get a permit for putting out.
That radar sign?
The radar sign.
Yeah.
It's like, well, I wish I hadn't asked, cause now that I know, I have to go for the permit.
You know, Chester wanted to, oh, you'll probably hear, Chester wanted to put up a welcome sign, like ours, with the.
Yep.
And, uh, John Tippett told me you can have three boards on that sign. And Sean said, geez, Deep River, they have more than that, who knew?
Yeah, it just did.
And I, you know, I could see they wanna say, you know, that's, that's all anybody can read, and that's driving off the road. But they, uh, they have it, uh, so what do they say about things like speed tables, just?
They said no.
Oh, I know they said no, but.
No, but they said no.
But they didn't have to explain.
We'll continue to push, no, they did explain, and, and if we had wanted to spend an hour, I could've argued against every one of their explanations.
Rumble strips were frowned upon because they've tried it and it just, the noise level.
Not rumble strips on the side.
Not on the side.
A lot of the sides.
Across the crosswalks.
Across the. Oh, last time, right.
At, at the crosswalks, I thought a rumble strip would be, just like when you're coming up to a toll booth on the highway, you get a little bit earlier and you, you know it's coming, you slow down a little bit.
They have a new technology that came out recently, um, you've seen double pneumatic tubes across the road occasionally?
To check on speed.
Oh, yeah, so a single tube just counts cars, two tubes, counts the axles, speed, north and south.
Not right now.
I thought I passed them, I'm sorry.
But they have a new technology now, no tubes, where they actually set up some type of monitoring device, so that it's, uh, it's obscured, so people.
And it's documented.
And every car documents it, and we asked them to, you know, the last study they did here was two thousand fifteen or two thousand fourteen, something like that. So, we asked them to update that with the new, you know, and we'll see where they go.
And DOT doesn't control state police, so, I mean, having additional radar traps or whatever from state police.
No, we'll continue, we'll continue to monitor Main Street, we'll get a little bit more in the north end, right now, I think folks are coming down the hill a little bit, but. Just FYI though, you're talking about rumble strips, they're also, as they do Route eighty, they will have rumble strips along that center line of that and the sides as well.
That's good.
So.
I don't know whether they're more important on the straight stretch. Well, and I can certainly see it on the really curvy part there where everybody cracks up. I don't know if a straight stretch poses a danger because people nod off, I mean, it's only half.
You wonder what the, what the thought process is.
Well, there's, there's statistics.
I'm sure there is, but.
You know.
I'm a bad driver, I, I drive up to Vermont all the time, and they've got them on all the roads up there. And it just drives me crazy, cause you know, you're trying to make a little time or something to get over a little bit of.
Well, you can do all kinds of stuff, I mean, you drive up and the, and the overhead sign says stay right except the pass. And everybody's in the left lane, I mean, there's a big sign that tells you what to do and nobody listens, so it's gonna be a fight.
Is my rumble strip, when I drive up, she hits me.
So, thanks, anyway, thank you, Mike, that's, that's nice of you to say that.
I just wanna say thank you, you know, cause it's a concern, and you followed up with it, appreciate it, everyone is.
Regarding roads though, I just wanted everyone to know, and the folks in the audience as well, that this weather has just been not conducive at all for people to get out and pave. Um, hopefully, we can get a break, but we're way behind in the roads done.
Yep, the whole state is.
And it's very frustrating for the residents, and I apologize for that, but I, you know, we can't, I can't get guys here, they're behind schedule.
When it's full of water.
So, we're trying, I understand Westbrook Road is, is in bad shape, that's why it's scheduled, but, um, we're doing our best to get folks out, same thing up on Book Hill, that's also scheduled. And I'm hopeful we'll talk a little bit more about it tonight, with some of the surplus money, I'm hopeful that we can, uh, put some more money in, back into the road for, so in the fall, we can, we can address another road or two. Um, some of the smaller roads that have been neglected for quite a long time, so. We're just, we're doing our best to get stuff done, this is really what it is, comes down to.
It's mother nature.
Nope.
Nope, I mean, the doors on that town hall, were scheduled to be red, redone last month, and I don't think he's gonna get here till next week, so. Um, so that's it from me, unless anyone, oh, we just had a carnival, it's coming up. Uh, concert, summer concert series starts this Thursday at Plattwood.
Twenty-seventh.
Yeah, this, Thursday, yeah.
It's Thursday.
Today's the twenty-fifth.
Summer's almost over.
Yeah.
Fourth of July.
It's fading like a tan.
I don't have any else, I have a motion to adjourn, so moved.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Thank you, Angus.
Good evening, this is the Deep River Board of Finance Regular Meeting, being held on Tuesday, June twenty-fifth, two thousand nineteen, seven thirty-one. It is my impression that a hundred years from now, people will go and listen to this, so. That's why I think we should say the date. They will say things like, look how quaint, they all had those computers.
You think a hundred years now, people will be that bored, huh?
Look how quaint, they had people, they didn't have, uh, computers doing the reading. Approval of the regular meeting minutes of May two thousand nineteen, okay? Um, we have already, we've already put them out there, that is meeting after, what was the day of the June meeting? We had the town meeting, which we met at, set the, uh.
Okay, the regular meeting was the twenty-ninth, the special meeting was the twentieth.
The twentieth, which is the day, night, oh, okay, the ninth, so it was the twentieth. So, all those who would like to say approve the meeting, the meeting minutes.
You'll need a motion, actually.
Definitely the motion first.
We have a first.
And, and, I'm confused, I need a motion, I'm just the May.
Just the May, regular May meeting.
And I made a motion that we accept the minutes from the May two thousand nineteen meeting.
Anyone second, any discussion of that, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Thank you very much. Uh, next item on is, our agenda is audience of citizen, okay? And we are all citizens, so you can say anything you want, um, but seeing none, uh, remember back in Rome, they would call each other citizen? Citizens, I forgot. Um, treasurer's report, which Tommy has left on our table here. And what should we look at? I guess we should look at the sum of the top three lines, uh, actually, it would be the fourth line. Uh, as of, it looks like the twenty-fifth today, I'm, I'm reading here that in the town funds, we have two million four. And he compares that to last G, last, in May, although he compares it with everything. Um, well, it's interesting, in May, we had four point eight, and, no, no, that's eighteen, so he's throwing me off. So, it, well, in May, we had four point eight, and now we have two point four.
No, I think the millions we all.
This is the sum of the total deposits of three million.
Oh, all right, all right, that's right, I asked that one, so, nevertheless, we are still, we had four point eight, we now have three point three. That still seems to be, well, it's at a million, a little over a million dollars a month, which is about, it's about a normal spend for us, I think so, all right?
Well above last year's, which was two-five.
Yeah.
We were at two-five-eighty-six last year.
Well above last year.
The bottom, bottom line.
Yes, yes, yes.
But we're a month ahead of last.
Year two, this was, this, this total, this four million eight hundred is May, twenty.
Yeah, we got the three, three.
The three-seven, three-three is still, is still in good shape, yeah, yeah.
So, we're well above the last year.
And we're actually still. The only source of revenue that I'm aware of that's substantial is the municipal aid grant, and that has still not come in, but OPM said today, it's in the mail, so.
Checks in the mail.
Yeah.
It's good, we didn't chat about that, that is the big num, that is the only big number I think we're waiting for, but, uh.
It's good, so we're almost eight hundred above last year.
Um.
That's good.
It is good, it is good, okay, all right, um.
Talk about that.
Hearing, hearing any more questions?
Yeah, do we know if the tax bills have gone out yet?
No, they didn't have that one out.
Yeah, it just seems like.
I think they'll have it Friday.
Okay, it just seems like.
Last year, they went out about this time all circle.
Yeah. Right when they're supposed to, get, everybody gets them in the mail on the first, and there they go.
Uh, recommendations of selectmen, your honor?
Okay. I think there were a couple of things that Bud and I spoke about today, but I can't, I can't remember them, I can't. But the one that, uh, the Board of Selectmen just went over is, uh, is important for me, for the town, and I think, um, that's something we will probably take some time on, because it's a little convoluted. Um, but you may or may not remember that we, uh, we've been speaking for the last few months about an energy, uh, efficiency upgrade at the elementary school, the town hall, and the library. Um, it's about a two hundred and eighty-two thousand dollar investment. Um, Eversource has a program that you can borrow that money on a lo, on a low-interest loan, um, and that will be, the, the cost will be absorbed into your bill. Uh, the problem with us for this particular project is that, in order to get this to be a, to not have to spend any, to actually spend additional monies as, as it goes on in four years, we would never have paid it off, we would've had a lump sum at the end. So, we asked them to extend it out to ten years, which is what they did, it's at three point seven, seven percent interest, um, after, that begins after the fourth year is over. It's no interest for the first four, as far as I understand it. Um, and in the end, we end up saving, and when this project is done, it's projected to save about forty thousand dollars a year on energy. The concern is that because it's stretched out over ten years, we won't see it in the bill, we'll get, the town will get a bill, the town is borrowing the money. Town will get a bill every month for three thousand dollars or so, maybe twenty-eight hundred. Which is fine for the town hall, it's fine for the element, for the library, but with the elementary school, that payment of utilities is made separately. And I've yet to figure out, and haven't spoken to the school, to the region yet, as to how we can make that, so we get a payment every year that is equivalent to what, what their portion of this project is. Um, and that's gotta be part of their energy budget, and all of that, all of that. Uh, we haven't figured out yet how to do that, I just really am just kinda getting this all together in a rush, because we have to get it done. If we're gonna do it at all, and that's, and that's where this, the crux of this comes down to. This project, this program is ending, so we're in it, we're signed up for it, so if we can act in the next couple of months, then we can take advantage of this low interest and, and long-term loan. The problem is the timing, we're just a couple of months behind on where we should be as far as getting all this locked in, so that the workers can be in the school when the kids are not in school. There, there's, everyone's pretty confident that we can get what we need done in August, if, if that's when we can get started by. But we've gotta go to a town meeting to do all of this. I don't, I'm not particularly comfortable going to a town meeting if we haven't figured out how the elementary school is gonna pay their portion of, of that work. And I don't wanna wait another month, because then we've got two weeks after that. So, what, and we'll, any questions that you all have, we'll talk about. But what the Board of Selectmen has done is moved to schedule a town meeting for, uh, July nineteenth, or eighteen? July eighteenth, um, which is three, three weeks and change out, three weeks and a couple of weeks out. That gives us a week to come up with answers to our questions prior to actually advertising the meeting. If in that time, we get either unsatisfactory answers or not, or answers that just aren't gonna work, or don't, or no answers, then we don't schedule the meeting. We push it back. If we do get the answers, then we've got the meeting scheduled, so we can continue the process of moving forward. And, so we voted to do that, fully expecting we'd explain what, what we have tonight, and if you feel the same, then we'll go the same way with, with y'all. If you feel differently, that's okay, you know, there's a lot of, a lot of questions that are out there, and if you haven't, you should ask them. And if there's something that get in the way of moving this forward, then, then we should not move forward. But the, what I, what I know is that this, there will be substantial savings, not only in energy, but also in maintenance, um, in projects. This, this, this will absorb a project that we've had ongoing for the last two or three years anyway, which is replacement of pneumatic valves in the heating system over there. So, we're spending probably fifteen, twenty thousand dollars a year replacing valves, this will absorb that cost. So, everything that we're already doing will be put into here, plus lighting, plus other efficiencies that will go, that will be better explained at the town meeting, or if you wanna have, the, the people come in before the town meeting, they can explain it much better than I can, as far as the details of what they're going to do. What, 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 what I like on the very sales pitch of it is the savings are substantial. Anything that we can do to save on, to conserve energy is, is important. Um, and the maintenance, everything there is old anyway, this is all stuff that if we don't do this, it's just gonna pile up and it's gonna be a larger expense later on for a lot of this, so.
The valves are on the new boiler?
No, they're not on the boiler, they're on the pipes going through the building, there, there's, the hot water that gets pushed through that building is controlled by pneumatic valves. Those valves are being converted to digital and electronic, or whatever the technology is for it, but I believe digital is the right way to say it. Um, and once they're all done, we'll be able to control the heat in the building remotely. If, if we get a super cold day and we notice, and we'll be able to, we'll notice that the library is colder than it should be, we can electronically, um, revise the heat, those valves, so that it throws a little more heat into the library. Um, things, things like that, and we can do this, uh, do the same thing with the library, with the town hall, and at the end of this project. So, that's where that's at, I've got an overview here that, that could answer a few questions, probably, any questions that you might. So that's where that's at. I've got an overview here that, that could answer a few questions, probably. Any questions that you might have, feel free to ask them, and we'll do our best to answer them and see if you agree. But the total project cost, the financed amount is two hundred and eighty-two thousand and forty-six dollars. And seventy-nine cents. I don't know how to figure that out, but what, what the savings doesn't take into account is in, the cost of energy going up. We know every couple of years, Eversource's costs are gonna, they're gonna get a rate increase, just 'cause that's what they do every couple of years. You could speak to that.
Savings does not assume that?
The savings does not assume that, but it, but it also does not assume the maintenance, so I think those two are gonna kinda wash each other out. I think actually the maintenance is, the, the savings that we get from maintenance will surpass the sa, the additional cost of rising energy costs. I think the maintenance over there is, if we don't do anything, is going to get, you know, we're already spending fifteen, twenty thousand a year, just maintaining the, the heating and the lighting and all that kinda thing. So.
Do we know what the saving, you mentioned forty thousand dollars in savings a year, okay? Then you mentioned the loan is gonna cost us three thousand dollars a month. So that's thirty-six thousand dollars a year.
Yep.
So what other savings are there in, you know, or is that it?
Well, let's see, we can take, break it down. The, it's a ten-year, hundred-and-twenty-month loan. The monthly savings are projected to be thirty-four, thirty-four hundred and four dollars. The monthly payment is gonna be twenty-eight hundred and twenty-four dollars. The energy efficiency, the, the energy itself is gonna save us thirty-four hundred dollars a month for the three buildings. The monthly payment for the loan is twenty-eight hundred, which comes, that balances out at, at five hundred and eighty dollars a month cash flow that will be coming back to the town. So our, our bill, supposedly, our, our electric bills will be less, our electric and gas and all of that, yeah, all of our energy bills will be less. How much will they be less? I think these are averages, because in wintertime, it's gonna be, they're gonna be higher, and summertime, they're gonna be lower. But the average is, is a monthly cash flow of five hundred and eighty bucks.
That's a net.
That's a net.
So next year, when we prepare the budget, right now, we have a budget for electricity of sixty-seven thousand dollars. Not sure we pay that much, but let's work with that. We would, I suggest we would multiply that by the thirty-four times twelve, reduce that number. In our debt line, we would put the twenty-eights, and we should see bottom line and budget, approximately five hundred, which that's a six thousand dollar a year savings, so, based on these numbers.
Yep. What confuses that is the payment method. Generally, in, in these type of pro, programs, usually that payment just comes, gets into the bill. So this is not going to come through the bill. It's gonna be a separate bill to the town for twenty-eight hundred dollars.
Actually, one, my story made lots of sense. Where we get off is that a lot of that savings goes to.
That's right.
So we actually will not see that, we would not see in the town budget that much of reduction.
Right.
School would see part, but we would see the twenty-eight.
Yep.
Hence going to your opening volley that we need to have agreement with the school, that they will send us a check period.
Yep, and we need to figure that out. I won't move it forward until that's written.
Do we have any other relationship with the school, where we give them a budget and they pay us period on a con? Police services.
Well, yeah, we, we can have contracted police services for them. Not that I can think of offhand. I mean, we don't plow the roads, but on occasion, we go up the road and plow. Fire services is not paid for.
Health insurance, they do their own.
Health insurance, we're on their, basically, we're tied into their insurance, yeah. So no, we don't, and it's, it's, I'm not, I'm not entirely sure how it can work, because we don't have the numbers, but, you know, we don't have concrete numbers of what that bill is going to be and what that portion of this bill will be. And that's what I'm going to be spending the week asking the finance people to tell us, okay, you've, you've done all the studies, and you, this is what you say is going to be the overall savings. I need it broken down from building to building to building, because of the building nature of this. And if they're able to do that in a way that's satisfactory, then we can move it forward. If they're not, a, and the school agrees to it, 'cause it will, it will throw off this year's budget, because if we do this, we will start seeing savings in September, and we'll start getting bills in September. We don't get a bill until the project is completed, all three buildings, but the, the goal is to get that completed before September.
Now, do we, as the board of, you as the board, so is there a recommendation from the board of selectmen that the board of selectmen send this to a public hearing?
Yeah, given that additional week.
If the town agrees to this, it, we have committed to put it in the budget, so.
Yep. I don't think this does anything except for help us in the budget. It's a borrow, yes, but it is also, you know, five hundred and eighty dollars net savings. It gets convoluted because the school's involved.
It's a net savings. We would, we would see, we would have to adjust our budget for the two thousand eight. We would see an increase in expenditures from.
We would see an increase in expenditures, that's right. That's right.
Conceptually, we see less of an energy cost, but we would see an increase in our, our budget.
Well, we wouldn't see as much, because they're gonna be seeing the energy savings much more than a building of this small size.
Yep, that, that's, that's right.
So we won't see.
Well, my use of savings, we have a budget that says we're going to pay sixty-seven thousand dollars, we took the town, then we will begin to look at actuals, but we will have a budget that reflects these sixty-seven. We're not gonna change that.
Right.
The actual will be lower than what we expected, but we won't see that till the year.
Yeah. To your quest, to your point, Lori, that is our concern as well. How do we control so that, I don't think it would happen, but, you know, in the past, those are the old stories. We've got, all of a sudden, they find five hundred dollars a month in savings. Well, gosh, we can spend that over here. Well, this, that's why this agreement has to be in place, that any savings that's ref, that, that's over there comes back to here, so we can help pay this loan. But remember, no matter how much they save, they save, or how much they spend, it's our money that we're sending over there. All of our taxpayers are paying the energy bills over there. It's our building. And whether it's part of their budget, that once we, once we give them, this is the money you have for energy, then, but you also have all this other money. It, it all comes out of the same, basically, forty-eight hundred people.
What are they doing as to save money? What are they going to put in place?
Well, more efficient lights, more efficient heating system.
Like they would do in your house, do your windows and your doors and your insulation plugs and all that sort of thing?
Yeah, not a whole, not a whole lot of that, although they can give you the details better than I can. This is, this is gonna be mostly lighting efficiencies with, with, with electricity and heating efficiencies with, with improvements to the existing system. Not gonna be a new system, but there'll be improvements made to it, so that it works better. Things like fans around, up in the, up in the attic of, of the library. If you remember, over there, there's an, an open attic above that. They get fans up there that will keep the, the warmer air in the library, as opposed to heat going up in needing an attic that doesn't need it. Moving.
And so there's no thought of ever doing any kind of solar heating?
That's not part of this. There is, there's a lot of thought going into how we're gonna, alternative energies. One of which is that we've gotta cap, that dump is gonna be capped within a year. When that gets done, we've had proposals already, or we've been approached to put a big solar farm up there to, to help produce energy for the town. We're working on, continuing to work on trying to get a fuel cell up, either at Mount St. John's or at the WPCA building, which, once we get gas up to that, we can use that to create energy for the, the town, for our town buildings, but also for the town itself, for our taxpayers. Those are things that are, they're not owned by the town, but the, the town collects taxes on them, but also produces energy that creates savings for the townspeople. As far as putting solar on the school, that, that roof is not, is not at all ready for that. It's not, it's not a good roof for that. It's not, it's not a good building for that, is what I've been told. But up at Valley, I mean, they just did it at Chester.
Been there for ten, twelve years.
So those are being looked at, but that's not part of this program. This is, this is internal, what's in the building, making it more efficient, making it less likely to break down because of the fact that it's newer.
All right, board of finance, shall we send this to a public hearing? Note that we would not have any opportunity to comment on the agreement that Angus, we will rely on Angus for reaching on, our next meeting would be after the public.
The twenty-third.
Yeah, so yes.
And we can push it back to, to, stuff to after your next meeting. I don't wanna push it back after that, because we don't meet in August. Or we could call a special meeting, and I'm happy to do that, call a special meeting for next week after, after I've got this agreement in place, or, or prepared, then let's, let's talk about it again. And I'm sorry to do that, but this is just, it's all coming faster than, than we were able to take care of.
And that's to be done this summer session at the school?
Well, that's the idea. We, it doesn't have to be done this.
And that's part of the time crunches.
That's, that's right. It doesn't have to be done this summer, but if we take on the project and we don't get the school done first, then we're not gonna see the savings, but we still will see the payment. Now, one, a part of what I'm doing is I'm trying to break this up and say, if we can't get that done, let's do them all independently, part of the same program, we'll do them all independently, so we do these two buildings now, and see these little bit savings, and then do that next summer during the vacations, or however they can do that, and then, then recognize those savings. That gets, again, that gets pretty convoluted, 'cause are we only borrowing as much as we need to get that part done, and will the program even allow to do that? Those are questions that have already been asked, but I don't expect those answers for a couple of days.
So would this two hundred and eighty-two thousand dollars be in addition to the sixty-seven thousand we've already budgeted for the energy costs?
This will be an additional debt that we need to take on over ten years.
Angus is making, yes, your answer, we'll spend more, well, no, that's kinda different. We sent sixty-eight thousand dollars to school. Some of the two hundred will go to the school, so.
Right.
I'm not sure my, my easy nod was correct, so. It will be in the form of the loan, so it's not sixty-seven going out the door.
Are there any other local towns that have, you know, done this program, or that you're aware of?
This particular program, no, not, not local.
No.
I, I wanna suggest someone up in the northeast corner, but I don't know any town. There are towns, there are many towns that have taken similar, similar programs. We did, we actually participated in this similar program for the Winthrop Firehouse. We did lights up there a couple of years ago using this type of program. We were going to Firehouse, wanted to do it at the new Firehouse, the same program, but it didn't make any sense to me if we're gonna be building a new Firehouse hopefully in the next year, so why, why take on that?
Can this work only be done by Eversource?
Yeah. The, the Eversource, yeah, they're the only people that I know that have this, I've never, I have not heard of any other people that have this type of program.
Not so much the program, the work itself.
The work itself is not being done by Eversource, it's outsourced. We, we work, we've got an, an energy company here in town called New England, uh, New England Energy. They've been working with us on all three buildings for, for a number of years. They will do the heating portion of this project. Another company that's a subsidy of Eversource will do the electrical. And the financing is a branch of Eversource. It's, it's an Eversource program, and it is, I'm sure that they benefit from it, because they do it for households and they do it for municipalities. It's the government, I'm, I'm sure that there's some sort of government subsidy for them to do these kinda things. I think that it's, I think it's a good, I think it's a good program. It, it, it works towards energy efficiency, which is where we, I think, I think we all agree we need to work towards. Gives us some, it absorbs some of a, an upgrade that we're already doing. But as far as whether there's another group that does this work, we can, we can, we can go out to bid and do, and do everything we need to, to, to get this work done, independent of this.
And, and exactly my point, and that's not an easy gig either, I realize, but that way it takes some of the rush out of it, and then you can do a building at a time.
The rush, the rush is driven by two things. The program is going to end. It's ended, and it will not last more than a couple, they, they won't let us keep going, it's extending and extending and extending. And the other part of the rush is to be done before school starts. If I can get them to agree to hold off on the school and hold off on the billing of that portion of it, of the loan, until the school is done, then that's what we're gonna do. There's no rush at all. But I'm just, I don't want this to run out. And I wasn't really, we were thinking out loud when we were at the selectmen's meeting to move this forward with, with that caveat of that additional week. And if we can schedule a quick five-minute meeting to review, I can send you guys all the agreement that I have beforehand, and then we can move forward without, without a big rush. It will be a rush, but it won't be, it won't be an unknown. That's, that's the part that I don't like about it. I, we tried, we talked about doing it on the twenty-sixth, but that extra week is, is an extra week. If you don't agree to that, that's fine. We can, we can schedule a town meeting for the twenty-sixth, or the twenty-seventh after your meeting.
So, board, I'll start the ball rolling. Here's a note. To use less of our, of our society's resources, and it is noble for government to sponsor solar. Therefore, it is noble that we proceed.
But this isn't solar.
This is not.
Uh, correct. It is, it is noble that we do, it is a green project. It is noble that we proceed. If you're at least nodding along with me, where I get uncomfortable is there's all these promises that we're going to save money on these things, and there's ten. I, I've never seen a whole lot of work done on the backend of calculating how much is actually, so if it can even be done, so. Much of the five hundred dollars of savings that we think we'll get in the early years, approximately half of it goes to the school, so we need some sort of relationship there. But I start off at the beginning. It is noble what we're trying to do, but as a members of board finance, we will be asking the town to take on more debt in the next ten years. It's an obligation we have to be patient about. Now that I've said all these random thoughts, Bud is your, it'd be nice to get it done sooner. I like to have the school done sooner.
Let me suggest this, then. Can we, I can have, I can arrange to have the folks that, not, so that I'm not the spokesman for the folks that are selling it to the town, which is Eversource and their funding people and, and all that. We can arrange to have them here. God bless you. We, and we don't have to do this. There is another program gonna come up that's similar to this. I mean, energy efficiency is going to happen. I don't, I've been told it will not be as attractive as this. But, you know, that's, that could be sales, you know, I, I don't know.
What's the financing on this year?
Pardon?
What's the financing on this year?
Three point seven seven.
Three point seven seven.
And not for the first four years.
Well, there's no interest. I, I suggest there is interest, just make part of the loan, and you're just gonna pay it back.
Yeah, yeah.
Nobody's giving anything away.
Well, you know, if this was just a four-year, there, there was a no-interest loan, but we can't, we can't do this project in four years without taking on another borrow besides that one.
How about you continue your work. Once you get comfortable, I will come to your meetings, and you and I will look over this thing. If the board would trust me. If the board would trust me, I'll look at the contract, I'll look at the agreement, see if I'm comfortable with it. I will correspond with the board. If I'm uncomfortable or not, I will correspond with the board and we will decide whether to come forward or not. I'd like to get done soon so that we can get this September.
Me too. I'd like to get it in behind us.
I'm not convinced yet the board is fully on board here.
I'm not either, and I'm not comfortable with the board not being comfortable. I'm not entirely comfortable. I am very confident that we are going to save, and I'm very confident that this project is going to benefit the community. I'm not confident of the details, and that's where I'm, I was reluctant to even come forward, but we're getting pressure that it has to move.
Two weeks. The selectmen have another regular meeting.
Three weeks.
Oh, three weeks.
I don't see how you can lose though. It's, they're going to make the buildings energy efficient.
No, two weeks, the night.
Fix your heating and they're going to maintain your delivery system and they're going to seal up all the air leaks and whatever else needs to be done. You're going to, you're going to save energy.
Right.
So your energy costs are going to be lower. So once you pay off your loan, you're going to have then an even better savings.
Oh, yeah.
And then if you look at the maintenance after the fact, I mean, Jonathan was relaying the town lights when they were first put in. They were burning out. Now they switched them all over to LED or whatever they are now, and one hasn't been replaced since. So that's manpower, our own manpower or electrical company, the manpower that you don't spend. And I'm sure it's probably a similar thing to replacing fluorescent bulbs in these buildings so you don't have to have somebody do that all the time. Down the road.
Is there any way we can have a quick special meeting just to discuss that on the night after or whenever?
Remember that the...
I could be home with the inlets, so yeah.
The only thing to keep in mind, and the reason that this got a little more convoluted is because whenever we decide to schedule the town meeting, we've got to have about two weeks' notice because we've got to advertise it so many days in advance. In order to advertise it, you've got to get that into the paper so many days in advance. So it knocks about 10 to 14 days out of the, it extends everything about two weeks. Which is why I was hopeful that we could get these questions answered in a week. And if we, if it was not to our satisfaction, then we don't, then we don't advertise it and we move, just move it out.
Well, next week is the 4th of July, so half of the week is kind of messed up anyhow.
Well, you don't know when you're going to hear from the school, that if we save them $10,000, is that $10,000 come back to us or are they just...
Right, no, we know it's going to come back to us.
We have to figure out how.
It's just we have to figure out how to do it.
Does there are timing on when you think that might come?
Well, I'll be on the phone with them. I mean, this all came up in conversation this afternoon with these folks that are like, what are you guys doing, what are you guys doing? Well, these are my questions. And they answered them in such a way that these new questions came up. And, okay, if it's not going to be part of the bill, then I've got to figure out how we're going to make sure that we're not just paying for additional tables or whatever the school needs every month. And that's, it's easy to have the conversation.
There is a being, I want to rephrase Bill's question. If we save the school $10,000, will we get it back? No, we won't. We will get some percentage of it to pay off the debt.
That's right. We won't, we won't get, in the end, there may be transfer of funds back and forth. We're not going to get back from the school. It's just all going to go towards the bill of the loan.
No, I'd say if we save this, if we save the school $10,000 a month, okay? And we're paying, and we're paying for the loan. And we should get the $10,000 a month back from the school. We just saved them $10,000 a month. They'll turn around and say, well, we'll give you $6,000. Well, you know.
Whatever, whatever their saving.
That's my concern.
Whatever the savings is, is what we should get back.
That's right.
And that's, and that's...
That's the details.
That's the detail that we need to figure out how to do that, because it's going to be different in January from what it is in June. So we've got to be able to get in place a, something that tells, that they're able to say, we saved this much this month. Now, that may be something that comes through Eversource.
I was going to say, Eversource should be able to give us that information because they...
They should be.
They might number for what you've...
They'll give you the electrical information, they won't give you gas.
Give you gas, and you've been having lots of trouble with the gas company and their reading of our meters. So that's another thing, conversation that needs to take place. Can they in fact tell us what we're saving, not what we're spending?
How much of the loan?
And we might not be able to do that, I'm sorry. We might not be able to do that. We can't say what you're saving because we don't know what we're going to spend. They're able to project, but they, you know, I don't know. I don't know if they can do it backwards. Those are the questions we have to ask, and if they can answer them as quickly as they can sell something.
How much is the school's portion of that bill, of the loan? So if it's a $3,000 monthly payment, it's not $1,000 for the town hall, $1,000 for the library, and $1,000 for the school. How much is actually the school's portion?
I have not gotten that broken out yet because that was my question to them before it came forward. I was on the phone for about an hour today with different people talking about this. The first question was, are we going to see this savings that you're telling us is, sounds fantastic. Is that going to be reflected in our bill or not? As soon as they said, no, it's not, then the question became, okay, you've got to take all these numbers and break them down to each building because they have to be kept independent of one another now because the school is different from the way, the way the school is paid is different from the way these two buildings are paid. I'd like to say that they're going to, they're going to work to get us those answers. If they don't, then we'll catch on to it next time. This is something that should be done. This seems to be a good way to do it if we can get the answers that we, that are, that we all agree to.
I just would not be in favor of doing it unless we can get those answers.
No, maybe. Nobody is. That's why, that's why we're asking, we're scheduling the meeting, the town meeting, we're asking to schedule a meeting for three weeks. Gives us a week to get some answers. Yes, it's a short.
If we have all the answers, have the meeting.
Right. And if we don't get the answers, then we just don't. Schedule it for a later time. And if we can't get it done in August, we can't get it done in August. More important to me is taking advantage of this program because you don't know what the program that's coming next is. Just like when we talked about signing onto the interest. I don't know what the interest rate is going to be, but when we agreed to sign onto this program, the caveat was, we're not going to go higher than 3.77, but if they find lower than 3.77, that's what we're going to get. I can't, I can't tell you what the next program is going to be and how it's going to work.
You know I support the program, but, you know, and you know my question of how the money's going to come back. When we were on the Regis War and they put the solar panels on John Winthrop, they sold us a package. And they said it's going to take X number of years to pay it off and you're going to have X number of savings. I'm not long on the board. I would like to know what those savings, if those saves equated to what they said. So they're saying, okay, we're going to have, we're going to save X number of dollars here. How do we know that?
You can't know that.
You don't.
You don't know what it might have been.
Should have, could have, would have. So my thing is, like I said, with the solar panels that John Winthrop, it was supposed to be a 10-year program, I believe it was. Did it pay off? You know, it's on a little bit different wavelength than what we're talking here, but it's all on assumption, right?
It's the same idea. They took, they took all of our numbers. We spent time with our, the energy company that we're using now over there in all of our buildings. They, they put a big program together saying, this is what we suggest we do and these are what we think the savings would be. Sent that to Eversource. Eversource took that apart, said, nope, those savings are too high. You're not going to save that much. You're going to save this much. And that, that all took about four months to get that part done. Then we moved forward to, okay, it sounds good to me. Let's talk to you guys. And that's when we started really talking about it.
I'm all, I'm all for saving.
It's all projection, man. They're just taking, they're taking numbers. They're not taking into account, like I said, they're not taking into account any increase in, in energy costs. We've already seen, the gas company told us, we're going to save all this money because we're going to convert to gas. Well, you know what? Oil prices dropped, gas prices went up, and the savings are not the same. But there we are, still saving, and it's burning more, you know, it's positives and negatives, all of it. As far as I'm concerned, if we break even, we're okay. Because we're better suited, we're saving on maintenance, we're saving on other things.
Plus I'm looking for the whole package.
So, you know, we can push, we can push ours back. We don't have to, we don't have to hold on. We can, if we get the answers, great. If we don't, we don't. I just, I don't, I don't want to lose this.
It seems to me it's only a rush if we can get the information that we need. Then we can rush it. If you don't get the information we need, then it's not a rush.
Just keep on, just keep on asking questions.
Keep asking questions and they go to Plan B, whatever Plan B happens to be in the new program or whatever. But if we can get the answers, do it.
Would we get any thoughts? Silence suggests that get information and try to come back or as opposed to proceed with your... Am I summarizing incorrectly? Should we send them out to set up a meeting or do you want to see what you got?
I'd like to, me, to get everything. That's just me.
As soon as, as it possible, as soon as you get all the answers and let everybody know and schedule a meeting at that point. Instead of trying to come up with one next number of weeks out.
That's too late.
Be informational just so that everybody's happy. I don't know.
Yeah, let's see. Let's see when we get the answers.
What the answers are.
Soon as we get the answers, you know, I'll ask the questions that we spoke about today. If you have any other thoughts, feel free to email them to me and we'll, I'll just ask. And we'll see. When we get the answers, we'll schedule a meeting. We'll schedule a special meeting at that meeting, schedule the town meeting. Fine with me. Okay.
What's the big issue? Big issue is the school, right, guys? Am I grabbing that correctly? Is that the hesitation, we spent all this money, the school gets all the savings? Is that, am I summarizing with concerns?
That is my, that's my big concern. How do we break down the cost between the buildings? We know, we know everything, the total cost and the total projected savings. We don't know building to building to building. We need to know that because of the difference in how the bills are paid.
I'd like the attorneys involved to draw up some paperwork to say, hey...
Well, just to get the school involved and make sure that the school understands what we're trying to do and agrees in principle, and then we can get the attorneys involved.
I'm sure on a cost basis, the school's got to be at least half.
I would.
At least half.
This project wouldn't, they, Eversource would not even have approached us if it hadn't been for the school. The school's the animal that drives this.
It could be even higher than half.
Oh, I would guess seventy-five. I think so. That's an energy hog over there.
Are there any controls at the school as to how energy is used? You know, are there individual thermostats? Can people regulate temperatures on their own, you know?
I don't know the answer. I don't think every room has a thermostat. I think that the, I don't think it does. I don't know.
I seem to recall that there's, it's rather antiquated. There's hot rooms and cold rooms just because of the age of that building. And that's when we, when I was on the Board of Education, they, there wasn't an efficient way to central air the whole building. And that's when we bought all those window air conditioner units. And air conditioning rooms, because some of the rooms were okay and some were really hot, so it was, we put the individual window air conditioners in those, in that building, yeah.
So it sounds like it's a big energy hog over there.
Absolutely.
It definitely is. It definitely is. Okay.
There you go. Keep going.
I can't remember the other two. But we'll talk about, we had a long conversation. Budget's the bigger issue, so.
Correspondence, hearing nuns, seeing nuns, we'll move on. Monthly budget report. Let us move to that. I, we can look at the, we have two choices. We have, I sent to you at about five o'clock the work that Angus and I had done today on the, on the budget. And that is one thing we can look at, it's an extension, or we can just look at what Kathy sent out to us, which are based on the same thing.
What do you want to do, Chief?
I'll go, I, I don't want to put everyone through all the detail, but if we have available to us the one that Angus and I worked on, I'd like to work on, I suggest we do that one.
Is it in our email?
It is.
To start with expenses or revenues?
It is. Now that I said that, I need to find it.
Let's see, there's some of us that don't have computers. I can, I haven't seen that yet because... I'm sure you did. I just haven't seen the computer since then. I can go print, print out what you worked on. We've got what, what we have.
And we'll talk about, we'll talk about.
So like, two, three, those guys are going to look on their shoulders.
Are you looking at the June 24th, the smell of the two or the law of the two dollars?
I'm not, I haven't seen anything.
Is it George and William?
Yeah, it was George and something.
George and William?
Yeah, it was.
George is May, William is Bill. I assume that is George and William. Does anyone, when they went over either revenues or expenses in the budget itself, have a question? If we, if we should answer those, absent that, I can sort of walk you through conceptually the changes for the extensions that we have made.
I can't pull it up, but I know that there were a couple salaries that are expended entirely. I think it was assessed or...
Yes, and then excellent question, which has mystified me for the last several months. The selectmen and the treasurer, and we may find others, are paid differently than those who are here on a daily basis. Those that are here on a daily basis are paid every two weeks. Selectmen are paid on... What's that? Expenses, that is correct, although I generally like to start and I'll start there, yes. So you would see them exhausted, selectmen, where the information sent to you on Friday, very confusing to me, I, has at least, has a one payroll left for all of these salary inflows. So for instance, the question Laurie asked me a moment ago, what is the yellow on the far right side? That is our attempt to bring the current year expenditure line up to a final year number. Now, the only one, and I'll give you no satisfaction, the only one that I thought was wrong is, you'll see under Board of Finance, we have not yet paid the auditors and full amount. And we have, and we have incurred printing expenses, which we have not.
Yes, we have.
We have.
Yes, I think that was the, the...
Yes, we have. Yes, we can.
Budget. I have the answers to most of the questions. We spent money to advertise the budget, to publish the budget, and for the postcards, that came up to a budget.
We don't have the hard budget, okay.
And we did that last year too. I didn't go that further than that. I just, I didn't remember ever doing that before out of this budget.
I must admit, nor did I. That is a good place for it. That is fine.
Before you get off, selectmen, for a minute.
Yes, yes, yes.
First of all, each of you guys owes me three cents.
Somebody, that's right, that is exactly right. That is exactly right.
Yeah, you're over expended by six cents.
Your Tommy, ninety-two cents.
I think they got to go looking for Tommy. He owes ninety-two cents. Damn Republicans, they want more money all the time, exactly.
Now, in all seriousness, the accounts manager...
Yeah, now we're getting rid of her, no.
By $198 at this point, when we're not really at the end of the June yet.
That is correct. That is in overtime. She gets paid overtime. So, yes, she's an hourly position.
She's an hourly position. Thank you. That's the answer.
And what, what's with our grant writer? Did we use one or get one?
We used the grant writer to do the fire truck, the agreement that Angus has with him, X amount of Angus put for it, I think the grant writer put for it. If he is successful, he will be paid $7,500. If you look way over to the left, if you are right, you will see that I have assumed that he is successful and I have assumed that he will pay that $7,500.
I hope you're right.
I may have put it there, I may have put it there out of an optimistic approach, yes, correct.
But why did you yellow, highlight the selectman's salary? That one kind of...
When did I do it?
Why?
Because if you look at current year... current year expenditures, which is what we have spent through June, which is really what we're worrying about here, over or under, I have moved the sixth, for instance, the first selectman, the sixty-seven, three oh seven, I have moved it to seventy, which is the budget. So what I'm going to say to you, here's what we're going to spend for the year, we're going to pay Angus his seventy thousand. Not sixty-seven.
For some reason, he's low there.
Well, because there's no paycheck. Whatever this, whenever this was cut, this was, that was the expenditures as of that moment, early in the week. Early, yes, early in the month.
But the seventy is not over, that's why I was just questioning, I saw.
No, seventy is, I'm saying, we're gonna get to a bottom line, I'm saying, here's what we're going to spend for the year.
Yeah, there's twenty-seven hundred left.
Yes, there's twenty-seven hundred, so yes. So when we get to the bottom line, and this is what I think we're going to spend for the year, we're going to compare that to the revenues we get for the year, and we'll figure out our result.
That's not working.
All right, I'm gonna move off of selectmen and keep you going down. Well, let's, let's figure out, what I've done is, we had a budget, if you look at the title called Net Working Budget. We had a budget for the selectmen, two hundred eighty-four thousand, three hundred and forty-one dollars. I believe that we will only spend for the selectmen, two hundred fifty-two, two hundred ninety-two dollars and nine, and twenty-three cents. So there is a savings in the selectman budget of approximately twenty, thirty-two thousand dollars. Savings could work, non-expenditures. Now, we're going to get to a number at the bottom, and as Angus and I said around today, what caused, it's a fairly good sized number. What caused all this? And it's going to be hard to point to anyone, there's a couple that jump out. But I believe each, most, most of our categories, there has been some underpayment, a non-payment in that category. There's a couple that are over. For instance, selection is over by about two point five. You with me? I'm gonna keep on going here. And we can stop and talk about any one of those, but anyhow, let's keep it going. Town clerk, again, I moved, the numbers that you have for actuals do not reflect the remaining two payments that, or payment that is due on their salary, so. Again, the town clerk, just keeping the theme going, we budget ninety-three, two eighty-eight. I believe we will only, that budget will only have ninety-one, nine, six, one, so saving them a thousand and three. Not a whole lot, but they all, they're all gonna add up. We're, I'm putting us right on budget. Angus and I will do the annual report, that is something we say, we say every time we get together. So it will be done one of these times, so I say we are right on budget. We owe our accountants and we, we're gonna do those pretty stuff. We're right on budget, a hundred dollars, Laurie, that's you.
Hey. What am I getting paid?
So, continue down, the assessor. The assessors' salary due. Yes, let's leave it at that. And there's some savings in there for valuation deals and that, but there is some savings there, of about eleven thousand dollars. Tax collector, tax collector is right on budget. We have chatted for years, at least I have insisted upon chatting for years. We have been budgeting tax refunds in the tax collector expenses. We have switched that in the new, new budget over to a reduction in revenue. So if someone comes in and overpays their taxes, or if they had a card that they, wasn't really on the brand list, and we send them a refund, it is there. Absent that twenty-three, she is right on, right on budget, if not below. Social services, we budgeted a hundred and fifty-six, and social, special services, I apologize. Social services, like, special services, you can see those names. We budgeted a hundred and fifty-six, and we're around, I think we're only gonna spend about a hundred and sixty, seventy-six, seventy-seven. I don't know what to do with this tax relief for elderly reserve. That's a number that town is committed to spend by state legislation, and it also reflects the legislation the town passed. I cannot, while it is not collected from people, it is given out, I cannot get a good number, and nobody seems to care whether I can get a good number. So I, I have just assumed it's not there, and it is, will be reflected in the tax revenue.
I don't think that that's correct.
That is just like the other one. We talked about this in a, popped into my head later on. Tax relief for the elderly is just like the other, like the tax refunds and tax relief, and I believe this year it's moved over into the...
We're moving it next year, hopefully from the old track track, that's correct.
But this is already been, this is not something that we're writing checks for. This is just money that we're not going to get.
That's correct.
So, when you say, right, so, so, I think I just misunderstood what you just said. That's gonna be zeroed out. I believe that it is, that it has been already.
I mean, all right, it's, it's, tax collector has just not collected, so we looked at tax revenues, it's in that number.
And this money is put together based on what Robin estimates what it's going to be, and she's usually pretty close.
She's gotta be pulling out from somewhere, she's gotta have a program that says Jane Doe is not going to pay a hundred dollars. She's gotta have that written down.
Robin has, that's correct. She gives the tape in the tax office and the, when the tax bill goes out, it reflects it, here's the amount you owe, and it is, reflects that credit that you get. So when we see it in revenues, it's up there in revenues. What frustrates me is, I would like to know how much that is. I would like to know how much we give to fire department, I would like to know how much we give to the other.
Yeah, she should be able to pull that out.
She can pull it out, it just didn't get into the accounting system.
Yeah, she can pull it out.
Then she should pull it up.
She does, she has.
She does, if you have a basis on numbers to get.
We don't know what it is. So anyhow, I, I suspect we will pick up quite a bit of savings in what we do, budgeted for the special services. Planning and zoning is, get, again, you go back to your, off the salaries, we'll bring them up to their budgeted amount, and there's a substantial savings over there, for instance, if you look at engineering review call, which is sort of interesting, because planning and zoning, we picked up, when we look at revenues, there's a substantial amount of revenues we've picked up from building permits, but we have not incurred the associate costs.
There's only been a couple of sub, I don't think the subdivision, there was only one subdivision that came through this year that required engineering. There were a couple of smaller projects that required smaller things, so there was not a lot that required that.
Kenoka, we're picking up about nineteen thousand dollars in, I said pick it up, in savings, we're not spending the budget.
But who is the planning and zoning stipend? Who does that, what is that service?
At the moment, it's Kathy Jefferson, is that what you're gonna, my enforcement officer salary?
The one fifteen hundred dollars?
Oh, Kathy Jefferson has an agreement with Smitty that she would receive a stipend of fifteen hundred dollars.
But that's gone.
Kathy will retire at the end of this month, if she hasn't retired already. Well, Angus will negotiate with somebody, do something.
I have no intention of, of paying a stipend.
The building inspector, you will note that the building inspector, we have a budgeted dollar amount, you see there, he is over currently, because he has put in overtime. I assume that will continue through the rest of the month, so we have a budget of thirty-five there. But, and so therefore, that line item is an over expenditure. And in the wetlands, as you can see, bring the salaries up, but there's still about a three thousand dollars savings there, under expenditure, I'm gonna use that. Insurance funds, we, we budgeted a hundred, and it actually cost us a hundred and nine-nine, so I reflect the actuals, sorry. Actually, I wanna say I, I happen to be the one who typed it, Angus and I did this. Glowing benefits, I've accepted the, the higher of the two, if the actual's higher, but I want you to glance down, it's the same conversation here. A tax exempt for the Deep River Fire Department, we budget fifteen, two thousand seven hundred and fifty dollars is in the actual. I really have no idea what that amount is. I have assumed that all the firemen are getting their credits, and I've assumed we're spending fifteen thousand dollars.
Yeah, that twenty-seven has gotta be a missed, missed number, because it's not a check we write.
That is correct. There is some, there's some flow of information that is very slow. Police protection, again, I am assuming that there's another payroll for both part-time and full-time, so we've moved their salaries to exactly what we budgeted. A state trooper is what, now this is interesting, I didn't, there's still thirty-two thousand dollars left on the state trooper. I should probably have changed that, shouldn't I?
Doesn't that usually come in with the extra money?
Not from state troopers.
No, but I mean, for the extra work that they do, they run behind.
We budgeted for a hundred percent.
If they get paid, then the money comes in later from the board.
Oh, really? Ah, now that is interesting, okay.
Revenue on strips will be budgeted.
Right.
Even if they're, or, even if they're...
Very good, very, very good.
...prepared, the states, or they were gonna, the towns were gonna be required to pay.
We budgeted for a hundred percent of contractors, still at eighty-five, that's what we're seeing in the tax one, so that remains a statement. As a reminder, here we are in the end of, end of June. There are still costs that are going to come at us as we close the books in July, so I caution you, well, I think we've got some good numbers here. There are still things in front of us, so. The police, so we increased the salaries of the officers. And I also increased, they are still doing what we call private duty type stuff, if that's the right word. So I increased, we budget thirty, as they budget, as they do it, we bill it out, we bill it out through June, a hundred fifty-seven, nine. I put that to one sixty-five, is actually what we're doing, just as an estimate. I believe police is always, is going to be over budgeted, but we collect revenues on the other side, so. It is a story of hurt. Fire department is very interesting. Traditionally, the fire department will spend all of their money. Sometimes get a little curious how, or authority, they have to spend different line items, but they do it and it works out fine. If you remember, they came to us and asked for authority to spend, what was it, about fifteen, sixteen thousand dollars for additional maintenance on the existing trucks. We gave them authority, and Angus chatted with them, that they should begin that maintenance in this budget year. And as you get to the bottom line, Laurie, you're going to see we have a fairly substantial surplus. We had, we had great insight giving them that authority, so. So although I think they will over expend their numbers by about twenty-two or so, a large portion of that is the incremental maintenance that we gave them authority to spend. Fire marshal is fire marshal, he's a little bit under. Communication center, virtually right on budget. Civil defense, civil preparedness, we saved a few dollars, okay. Highway department deserves a, a look, I've kept the salaries at the budget, three twenty-one. Equipment maintenance, we budgeted a hundred, spent seventy-four to date. Angus and I said there's still things to do, so we've moved that to eighty-five is the expected number for the year. At the annual meeting in May, the town allowed us to increase the budgeted amount of a hundred, initially a budget of a hundred and fifty, by additional fifty. So there's the two hundred thousand dollars that we have approved for this budget. We're going to spend it, as far as I'm concerned. Town aid road, which is the dollars the state gives, the hundred ninety-eight four. I certainly assume we are going to pay it, Angus has given me no indication we won't, while the number is still there, it...
Can I, can I ask a question on this?
Please, sir.
I've been sitting here for eight years listening to Board of Finance stuff, and I don't know, do we, we don't pave our own roads, the town crew doesn't do that.
No, we will pave some this year, we'll do some of our own patches this year, but the paving itself is contracted out.
And do we, who, who, who does it, or is it?
We solicit bids from different contractors around. This year, those contracts were awarded to Nick Olson with Winthrop Construction and Dibble Construction out of Old Sabre.
Okay, so it's not the same person, we don't...
I solicit...
Because somebody has been doing a great job for years, you know.
No, I solicit from Tilcon, from Sullivan Brothers, from different, different folks around. American, but...
And you probably don't know the answer to this. I don't, how, how many miles, Deep River has, what, twenty-six miles?
We have thirty-five miles of road.
Thirty-five miles of road.
How many miles are we doing? I don't know.
Probably not even a mile.
I don't, no, we're, we're gonna do probably a mile. We're gonna do a lot this year.
Well, how long is the Cranberry Bog?
Right, Cranberry Bog, that was, yeah, that was, I don't know.
I just drove down the first time.
Fifteen hundred feet.
Yeah, that's a long, pretty long road. It's amazing how expensive even a short...
Oh, no, it's expensive. And it's, it's especially expensive if you do, if you do what we're doing on the roads that we're doing that are in such disrepair, rather than just laying another layer of pavement on top. You gotta tear away the sub, or subgrade it, regrade it, and put the pavement on top of that. And hopefully, you get a few more years out of it that way. And we're gonna start an oil and stone project on roads that are not bad yet, because that, everything I read tells me, and everything I'm told tells me, that that extends the life of probably three or four years. It's been a long time since we've done it. Since I've been here, I don't remember ever doing it.
I don't remember town, the town itself.
Gordon, Gordon used to do it.
Yeah, it means, it, it does a lot to give you more time.
When do you do the potholes?
Soon as Mother Nature comes.
Seems like three or four times a week. We are, and we were talking at this selectman's meeting, the roads that we have that are in bad shape right now are in really bad shape. And we can't get the contract, the weather has just been not conducive to getting any work done. That's can, they can't pave it, right?
I was about wiped out the other day, coming down River Road on one of the curves, because somebody coming up the other way went around the pothole, and then going around the pothole, they were over in my lane.
Well, River Road...
And I was coming around the curve, and you know, we went off the side of the road.
Call me on that, I don't drive up all thirty-five miles every day. So I don't know a lot about it. But call me, if you see one, let us know, because we'll address it, especially on a road like, with, like River Road, where we just paved a big section of that. So we're not, that's not in the immediate plans. So if we know there's a pothole, we can get up there and take care of it.
And that's something our guys do.
That's our guys do that.
Our guys do that, and it's not a contractor. The old joke is, don't fix the pothole near my house, because I gotta have someplace to keep my boat.
Is there a... Is your profile, is there a consistency in where roads wear down? Is it the center of town where more cars are going past, or is there...
Well, traffic, certainly, Kelsey Hill is, is a good example of that. Kelsey Hill brakes down faster than most other roads, because of all the bus traffic.
All the bus traffic.
All the buses, trucks, and the constant school traffic.
And it's gonna get a big, big workout in a couple of years when they start the bridge project every day, because that is the detour. So.
A bridge by Deep River Farms.
Yeah, yeah.
When you talk to the school, have them pass a fee for heavy road usage?
Thumbs up. That's a road that every, every town, there are all three towns, sends their kids up that road. We maintain it.
We maintain it, yeah.
And that corner is really kind of boggy, a little water. Yeah, it's underwater.
So, so there you go, so we will spend all those dollars, if you remember, we've got the MS four, which is our vacuuming the sewers. We've kept that at eighteen, which is over budget.
MS four is much, much more than that.
Oh, is it?
Yeah, that is just a part of the project that, it's easy to explain. There's a lot of maintenance, a lot of things, and it will, that budget will increase every year from now, in the next ten years, that, that is an unknown of what the cost is gonna be on there, but it will continue, it will increase.
I certainly can't, what we've spent so far. Now, salt and sand, we had a bud, we budgeted twenty, we've only used sixteen, but Angus and Torres, he just bought another, I don't know how you, what you call...
Twenty-four tons of sand.
So I've just kept it at the, the budgeted amount. We have a contingency in the highway department of fifteen, we spent three-five, I took it to five, Angus, Angus took it to five, so there is some savings there. So even though we have lots of stories going on in the highway department, I still believe they will come in about twenty-two thousand dollars below what we budgeted.
Nice.
Public utilities, waste remove, a lot of pressure up there, but you'll see that our assumption is that tipping fees and recycling fees, we will meet the budgeted dollar amount, hopefully, again, more information as time comes in, but still think we'll pick up about twenty thousand dollars of unspending there. I gotta do better on that one. Public health services, to break even, municipal library, always a favorite, for lots of reasons. I have assumed that the librarian will be paying her salary. I'm still confused, we, we had a conversation with them about overpending their, overexpending for their assistance, but next year, we will look for better. They're over expended so far on assistance, and I've assumed that will continue at least in this budget year. So I'm, while I think they're pretty close to breaking even, I think they will ask us for additional two thousand dollars. Not ask, if we will require to fund about two thousand. Parks and Rec, we can say, go on to any, we'll take on any... Parks and Rec, we can say, uh, go on to any, we'll take any park, but they've got, um, summer help, they're starting the camp, so I've taken, uh, while the, the actuals are, I believe the actuals are a little low, so we increased those. And, and so, um, I put that up there, so. Um, I still think they, let's call them breaking even. And remember, on the revenue side, they are, they are generating revenue, so.
All right.
I think we're, we're doing okay there. Uh, subdivisions, I think you'd have to really break even, or have done a little savings there. Fountain Hills, right on. Interest payments, right on. Redemption of debt, I think everything, we, we knew what those payments were, so I believe, at least my assumption, that all of our payments will meet their scheduled obligations. We did not issue the bond to fund the school roof of the highway vehicle, so the hundred and forty-four-two, which we budgeted, we will see as a saving, so. And, uh, so, um, and I have assumed that, um, since we're at the end of this period, I'm assuming that the boiler payment is made, so that's a small number there, but I think we'll see some savings coming out of that. Elementary school, uh, the elementary school is the elementary school, and, uh, we made an additional sixty-eight thousand dollars, four hundred and eighty-seven dollars, we know that, so they're right on budget. Um, we had budgeted for maintenance of the elementary school, two hundred and forty, we chose not to proceed with the, uh, roofs, so we kept it at the forty, so additional saving of two hundred there. Uh, regional school is, uh, as budgeted. Working our way down the line to government capital, uh, we have, we budgeted to, uh, do something at the fire stations, thirty-five, they spent thirty-three, I kept that. Uh, we agreed that we would, uh, make a special appropriation for the turnout gear, and while we haven't spent it yet, I'm assuming we will. Um, revow, while that will drop, we've not figured out where to put that. While it will drop into our surplus, we need to remember that there is money in that surplus waiting for their revaluation. Um, Angus is working with the architect on the fire department, that we budgeted twenty, we spent eleven so far, the remaining twenty will be spent. Um, now, I may have a bad number here, Angus. We budgeted three hundred and twenty-five to get trucks. To date, we have spent a hundred eighty-eight, seven oh six. Um, what did you tell me was the expected number here? Eighty-five, or?
I think eighty-five.
That's the number we put in there. So the two seventy-three that you see is what Angus is encouraging us to think we're going to spend, which brings us all the way down to, as we say in accounting, the bottom line. Um, I believe we will spend seventeen million one hundred and sixty-five thousand four hundred and thirty-two dollars this year, as opposed to the budget, where we said we would spend seventeen million six hundred seventy-nine, three-three-five, right? Um, they save, and we have, uh, lower expenditures of about five hundred seventeen thousand dollars. We just went through them. And, uh, now, we can go, if anyone would like, we can go through the revenues, although, um, the revenues are coming in well. I gave you what I think is the revenue number, seventeen seven one three, which gives us a, I, uh, it gives us a large amount of money. I sent you a note earlier today, I played with some numbers. I, I believe, sitting here in June, based on the work Angus and I did, and hopefully all of you are at least nodding it makes sense, that we could end June, we could end this fiscal year with about five hundred and forty-seven, five hundred and forty-eight thousand dollars of surplus.
Does that include, and I know we talked about this before, because that, that includes the money that we counted on for revenue, that, by borrowing, that we did not take in.
That's correct. And we can go through revenue. Um, we have, I, we are currently on budget for the tax collector. Uh, I believe, chatting with her, we actually will get more, but we got more from prior collections, we have more from, uh, cars that we assumed were going to be, uh, for, who didn't pay for it, more from that. We've got, we can go through those numbers, they're in there, but yes, I picked up all those numbers, that is correct.
She's less than one percent, how?
Uh, she is less, point, I think it's twenty-three thousand dollars, based on this number, which I believe is three or four weeks old. So, um, they just sent out notices for people who forgot to pay their auto taxes in July. Um, we should get some of those. I believe we will be over the ninety-eight percent. Um, and again, we're collecting, so, uh, I think we're doing well. We did better with the state on several.
There's, there's a good portion of this, at least two hundred thousand, I, I think it's, I think it's closer to two fifty, that we did not budget for revenues, that we, that we picked up in the end with ECS money and, and, and I think a little high level. Um, so, you know, this is not five hundred and something thousand dollars that we.
Suddenly surprised.
That we suddenly surprised, we, we know that two hundred and fifty, that. I am surprised that it's as high as it is. That, that's, that's much higher than I anticipated.
But half of it, you had no idea was.
That's right.
Fifteen months ago when we did this budget.
That's right.
You had no way of knowing that.
That's right, but I'm still, you know, I'm going through this, and like Bud said, we, we went through this, and I went through it before, and, you know, it's twenty thousand here, twenty thousand of the fuel, uh, in the selectmen's, just for example, I don't wanna go through each thing, but for example, in the town hall operation, fuel, gas, buildings, vehicle, that's twenty-seven thousand dollars less than what we budgeted for.
Very good.
That's, that's gotta be, price of fuel has dropped. Even things as simple as we only had a few snowstorms, the, the trucks weren't out, you know, but that's twenty-seven thousand in just one line. Multiply that times all these lines out. I don't know, I, we can go through it, and it could be a little bit of also just being stuck in this, we're not gonna spend money mode, you know. Um, I know that I've been, I've been hammering that down in all the, all the departments, that we're just not gonna spend. Um, but that's more than I, I anticipated, and more than I would have liked, to be frank. It's nice to have.
I just wanna jump on that. I'm a bit uncomfortable. That, that's just, I'm a little uncomfortable, that's high.
Yeah.
Um, all the good rea, all the reasons, I, I can defend all the reasons, but.
You did not know the state, what the state, what the state.
It's over two hundred thousand, but how, how would you know that?
You don't know it.
We, we were thinking they were gonna pay us two hundred thousand less.
When we made the budget last year, we didn't think they were gonna pass the last, but they told us they're going to, so, correct.
But we're still much higher than we were three months ago when we last did this.
Yes.
This is, this is a big difference from what we thought we were at, and, and I'm, I'm not quite understanding that yet. Uh, they're going line by line and saying, well, there's, there's reasons for it.
And, and actually, I went line by line, which I will send to you, which, well, I went line by line and compared it to what I stood in front of the town and said, here's what I think the surplus is. We told the town we would have surpluses of about two hundred and fifty, and we celebrated. We're two hundred and fifty higher than that. Um, and I've identified most of the numbers. We've got some more revenues coming, both of these expenditures, okay. And part of it would come from, uh, in May, you and I said, I don't know whether the tax collector's gonna spend, I don't know whether the assessor, so we were extremely, I don't know, though we're conservative or not. Now that we've got five days left in the month, we are much sharper with our pencils, we picked up lots of savings. I think that had a lot to do with it, but it is still a big number.
And there are things, you know, there, there's a positive to saving, you know, when we, there's, there's money that we can put into our reserve fund, that, which is, it's all positive, and that we can help, help us with next years, which we know is gonna be more difficult. Those, those are all good things, but with municipal budgeting, I'm just not comfortable with that big of a surplus coming in. I'm just, it's too much, and I, there's all good, there's all good reasons, and it's all good results.
Let me, let me ask you, Bones, if it was two hundred thousand dollars, would you be comfortable with that, comfortable enough with that?
Yeah, I would be, I would be pleased with that, actually, given, given the circumstances of where we came, coming into this year.
And looking at the budget, uh, there were three sources, where we got three hundred for the building permits, over by fifty thousand, uh, two hundred thousand from the state, and there was something else that was over by fifty. In three little places, it added up to three hundred thousand dollars. Again, I, how would you sit here last, fifteen months ago and say, oh, we think, we budgeted what the building inspector, what we thought, what we thought, no, inspector, what the permits.
Permits, right.
What we thought, they would, first of all, we budgeted what we thought the state would give us. So, you know, you're over, yes. I know you feel uncomfortable, but uh, you, there's no way any of us could know that, and we have people up at the State House, you know, looking at these things.
I don't know, in, in the end, we, we end up this year with the mine. We, we, it will help us.
It will help us next.
Help us next year. Um, and it could help us with roads, you know, in, in the end, this, we've got this additional cash. I, I'm not gonna try to come in and say we can add more to this year, but maybe in the fall, we can come back and say, hey, you know, we can, we can get that, that small section of the road up there for another fifty thousand, and still not hurt ourselves, 'cause we'll still be well above where we anticipated being with our reserve fund. And, uh, of, of all of the things that I'm pleased about in the last three years, is our reserve fund has grown considerably, and it, and it needed to.
I'd rather see.
And it still isn't where it should be.
It's nowhere near where it should be, exactly.
No, it, it's nowhere near where it should be. I'd rather see, instead of taking a ten-year loan out, use some of that towards the energy savings program, and pay it off in four years. If it's only two hundred and eighty thousand, there's three hundred thousand. I mean, it, uh, let's get everything.
It's an interesting idea, but.
Yeah, let's get everything down first, but.
There's a lot to be said for the long-range borrow and, and keeping the payments where they are, and keeping this reserve where it is and all that kind of stuff. But, but those are things we can talk about. Those are things we have, we have a little bit more breathing room to talk about in that. And I think it will help us next year, and it'll help us the year after that.
But we can lose sight of the fact that we got a horrendous mill rate.
Yeah, that's right.
Taxes in this town are terrible.
And we're gonna be hit by a school again.
If we could just keep it where it is, and maybe even go the other way, would be a great asset.
That's the goal.
If we have a surplus, I don't think we should spend it, we should just keep it for next year, because next year, if we get hit, we have something. If we don't, then we can maybe do something about the mill rate.
Well, those, those, those are, those are the goals. Some, I think those are everybody's goal around it, too. How we get there, um, we'll see, and it'd be a good conversation.
Well, you can pride yourself on the fact that we did not release the mill rate, which was excellent.
Well, yeah, we have, so we got, that kind of a surplus, we could have lowered it, but we didn't know that surplus was.
Right.
Okay. But I don't want us to spend the surplus, and then next year be the same quote again.
That's correct.
And have to raise it.
Yeah. Remember the, while I'm estimating five, seven, uh, seven-five, we are calling upon approximately ninety-seven thousand of that for this year's budget, so what we'll actually contribute to surplus will be less than five.
That's right, remember that, keep that while we talk about that.
My math is, and I think I put it in my email to you, my math, if we reduce the, take the ninety-seven out of the, this number, and apply a percent to the budget, we are about nine point nine surplus to our, our, our next year's budget.
Nine point nine percent.
Yes.
Plus, we've gotta think about one thing. We are taking between twenty and thirty, depending on which year, and setting it aside for the tax assessment. So of that money we have in there, we have to wipe out automatically, what is it, a hundred and thou, a hundred thousand?
It's not in there. I recognize it as an expense. It's not in that five seventy-nine, five forty-seven.
Right, but the money that we have in our overall savings.
Yes.
Earmark.
Earmarks for that.
Next, next year, there's a hundred thousand dollars coming out of that.
Yeah, coming right out of that and going towards the revow. So we, that drops that money down of what we have in the savings account.
Well, I wanna be resistant, 'cause it's not in the five seventy-nine. I recognize that as an expense.
Right, it is an expense.
So you would add twenty to that number.
We would add twenty, but the, the total amount we have in the unappropriated general fund, the three, three point three, we have to take a hundred thousand out of that when we start figuring, oh, we've got all this money set aside. Yeah, we do, but we have a hundred set for this project, and whatever else we have going. So it's not all just money that can be used on monthly bills. You're not following me.
I'm following you, and I don't think you're right. The twenty thousand we asked people to pay us this year is, while coming but never do it, is sitting in another town. It's not in that surplus.
It's not in the surplus, no, but it's in the savings, it's in the bank right now.
We should, if you want the number, you should add it to the number here, you add it here.
No, he didn't use the, he didn't use that as our surplus.
Right.
I'm not talking surplus, I mean, in the savings account as a whole.
Okay.
You know, yeah, we've got three point three in the savings account, but, eh, no, we really don't have three point three, we only have three point two.
No, I had to say that.
Because a hundred of that has to go here.
You can say that part, I hear it's possible.
Yeah.
Okay, okay. Um, hint, we will talk about, the auditors gave us things that they would like to see us do, and it bumps into our conversation. The auditor said, they recommend that we have a policy statement on how we treat surplus or unassigned budget. They said all, I don't know if he said all. Many towns have a statement, a policy statement, of how they treat their unassigned balance, okay. For instance, the easy thing is, what is your target? Um, now, I'm going to suggest, just to get the conversation in your head, that we have a target of ten percent. The town of Deep River, Board of Finance is targeting ten percent unassigned surplus to, uh, as a requirement, okay? We're almost there, this number. I bet, I'm making things up just to make the conversation easier. Uh, if we were to have more money, we could then start funding sinking funds, such as moving money into our capital funds for future fire trucks, for future fire houses. It is just the conversation. Now, if we need to go and borrow money for a firehouse, big if, but let's put it on the positive side, we have been told that those who are lenders will want to see that kind of statement. So, I don't know if any of you have any thoughts, any direction, but I think we're going to need to move towards a statement. And I think ten is a big ten is a. On a budget of eighteen million eight, that's almost two million dollars of surplus, we think is the right number. That's a big number.
Well, the number that's recommended is sixteen point six percent.
I know.
You, two million dollars is only a month and a half.
Two million dollars, a lot of money. I mean, school would have to blow away. I made that up. We're a large hunk of it, but anyhow, so, just something we need to start thinking about. Uh, ten percent is the sort of the area, I think, is a number to put in our policy, and we'll take it from there.
I think we're gonna, we'll work on our policy.
That's right.
Right after we finish the annual report.
That's a deal.
Okay.
Or Angus and my funeral, whatever comes first. So, cool. Uh, be careful what you ask for, so. Uh, all right, anyone, do you have any more questions? Now, with that in mind, we have a obligation, which we do every year, to approve the letter sent to us by the tax collector to move funds that she thinks cannot be collected. Um, those numbers are on the balance sheet of the town, as a receivable. Those who look at our financial statements think that we will be receiving those dollars in the future. She has done, and she did a good job in her letter explaining to you, she has exhausted all the standard ways of finding people. She has also identified every person why she cannot, um, collect it, many of which are deceased, many of which have moved out of state. She would like to move it to a suspense account, which moves it off of our balance sheet. Does not mean she will not continue to go after it. So, uh, I would like to approve those dollars. Um, does anyone wanna discuss it more, approve it or something? Discuss it in more detail?
Make a caution, let me approve.
Thank you, thank you.
Second.
Thank you. Anyone, any further discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Thank you. Sorry that'll keep the most exciting thing to the end. Keep you here, so. Uh, any other business to come before the board? We meet next month, right, right? Yes.
We meet, meet next month, or, or sooner.
Or soon, or soon, or, and sooner, of course. All good.
Uh, can I have an emotion too?
You have a second.
Got it. All in favor, say aye, it is done.
Aye.
Thank you all.